Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 6, 2023 Counterrental and Planting Board Meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval minutes. We just got them a little while later, so I can move that to the end of the agenda. Jay, is there any correspondence?
Yep, so I did speak with John Lyons and Kim Garrison. We are not going to have the ONG matter on the agenda for this meeting. We will need to schedule a meeting, attorney-client meeting, prior to the May 4th meeting. So let's discuss that afterwards. I've also had a conversation with people who are planning for it. Were not in line with their approvals, I believe. One person did repair the cell fence, but there's maybe a question about whether that was consistent with their approval. So speak to me if you'd like to go through that. And then the other person, the other part, you can assure me that they would place the cell fencing up, but apparently have not done so yet. So I'll give them another call. They are also missing that.
And they're supposed to return with an amended site plan for the additional three acres and the sector, right?
Um, yes, yes. So that's what I meant when I said they're missing maps. We also have a, um, another matter that I've been corresponding with folks about. And I believe that that's going to resolve in addition. Additional, um, action needed by another party. We also are scheduled for personal training with Nan on the approach for the town five. That will be helping persons and dogs in the, um, for freshness.
You're single?
It's my, my, right, may or may more. And we're going to use that opportunity to explore erosion and sediment control as well as swims. Not just the, I didn't want to use.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments on the correspondence or what? Okay. Hey, let's go into old business. The first application is Wiltsey Bridge Consulting. It's a public hearing, there's special use permit for a short-term rental. The address is 691 Wiltsey Bridge Road. Does anybody here represent Wiltsey Bridge Consulting?
Yes, on the Zoom.
Okay, would you like to give us an overview of the short-term rental details?
Yeah, absolutely. We have a property on Wiltsey Bridge Road. We have owned it for about seven years at this point. And in the process of that, uh, due to work, I've had to move from New York to California, so now live in California. We love the house and would like to move back to it at some point, but in the interim, aren't able to be there. Frequently enough to make it work for us financially. But do like to come in the summer and try to spend as much time as there as we can. But would like to be able to rent it in the meantime to help cover the costs so that we can hold on to it. We have rented it to longer-term tenants in the interim, so for the last four years. Um, and I've always made sure that everyone there is very respectful and aware of the neighborhood. But just to give ourselves a little bit of flexibility in terms of covering the costs for the house to try to have the option to do a short-term rental as well as a longer-term lease.
How many bedrooms in the maximum?
Uh, there are three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. Uh, the maximum occupancy would be six, potentially seven if you put someone in a TV room. And there's parking, it's off the road, it's off the street. Um, so, and, and.
Yeah, you comply with requirements to fill the department that will your inspection.
Yes, Addison come by and checked everything out. Um, and all of that is in line with how the house is registered on the tax roll, et cetera.
Get a motion to open the public. Okay. Thank you, all in favor?
I have.
Public hearing is open. Anybody on the board have any questions to start with? I'm seeing, anybody in the audience or on Zoom have any, um, thoughts, concerns, questions on Wiltsey Road, Wiltsey Bridge Consulting for a term rental? Anybody waving? Nobody here? Nope. Hey, I guess, um, motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Okay. Um, can I get a motion for lead agency? All in favor?
All right.
On sequence. All in favor?
All right.
Right. Okay, on the application. Can I get him? Do they?
Justin Jay was on screen.
Yeah.
False card.
We waving?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's fine.
Right, no, I'm actually trying to change the view. Okay, um, Colleen, your question often for a, um, with the exception of the universal. So I sent eight, can you hear me? Now.
Sorry, I can hear you now.
Um, I sent you an invoice for the, and, um.
We put a check in this morning, this, in the mail this morning for the balance, Jay.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I would recommend.
Okay, I made a question for conditional approval of the short-term rental. Yes, pending receipt of, of payments.
Hey. All in favor? Uh, hi. Hey. Yes. Um, you're all set.
Thank you so much. I also really appreciate the rigor and attention you put into this for the community. I think it matters.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to do this. I'm going to go on to new business. SAC, SAFE, group LLC, special use permit renewal for 19, make sure you're high. Anybody here on? Can you step up to the? Yeah. The same. This is your first renewal?
Yes.
Jay, any issues with the renewal, any complaints, problems?
Um, so. The only issues that were noted were the. Question thirteen, maybe that correct?
Yeah, it just, um, it looks like maybe you just forgot to fill it, the question thirteen A. It's the first part of question thirteen, which should be yes.
Wetlands?
Uh, wetlands, yeah, should be yes. You filled out, you actually answered the second part, would it actually impact the wetlands? But, um, so I think just thirteen A has to be a yes or no.
Right.
It should be yes.
Yeah, so I guess it's just, it's because it's right next to the pond. So that's why, I think that was the question at hand.
Yeah, yeah.
So with that correct? Um, with the yes, yeah. Hold on one moment.
Okay. Okay, everybody in line, Jay?
Yep.
Yeah. There's no, um, sleep on or renewal, right? Okay. Yes, any other questions, thoughts, anybody? They didn't just.
I have a question. So the first time around, I thought when I was at the original meeting, they said that we'd be notified as to how the renewal process would go. So I kind of, I was confused by that because I didn't really get applications until late and I was kind of surprised. And that's why it seems so dread on. So I was kind of wondering, are we going to be notified at a certain date? On the calendar or is it, what, how is that process that's set up?
The renewal, um, so I would say that everybody in this room can make a statement regarding the renewal process because it begins with the zoning enforcement office.
Okay.
So the, the best way to answer your question would be go directly.
But I mean, does he have a, an anniversary date? Right, I mean, actually said by you guys, right, as to what he does, I mean.
I think I'm telling you that it dates when you are approved. Um, he also has the ability to reach out to you prior to that date or after that date.
Yeah.
But if you, if you want some clarification in that process, definitely.
Okay, I can reach out. I just, because we're doing it, I think for last year for the, we're going to be doing one again. I'm not sure of the timing, so. Okay. I wasn't sure of the actual anniversary date that's defined because it's kind of a little confusing.
This, this approval will come for one year from the date of today's approval.
Okay.
So on, on or about, let's say, maybe March, early March, you should either speak to Ed or receive some information from.
Okay.
And then you should be on.
So that, that's fine. I just didn't know when I should put in my calendar to say, I haven't heard. So that's all, okay.
Late February, early March, we should hear from everything that's going.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So you need a motion?
Yeah.
Uh, I got a motion for approval of stocky group rental.
Send it. All in favor? All right. You're renewed.
Thank you.
Love luck.
Come on.
Um, I'm going to go to the second renewal, leave the Bronx House for the last, because that may be somewhat time-consuming. NGO. That's you?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi there.
Just a brief overview.
I got the house in 2017. I, um, applied for a short-term rental special use permit and was approved in September 2021. And I am, and I heard from Ed recently similar to ask gentlemen to get my papers in order, um, in March. And here I am.
So you're kind of overdue.
Yes, sir.
Jay, any other, any issues?
Um, so as noted by Colleen, um, there are state problems with the EAF.
Yeah.
Thirteen. Thirteen.
Uh, yeah, there's, it's thirteen and I think it's in the location or proximity to Northern Longyear Bat and Bob Turtle. So it just would need to be noted on the, on the map, on the EA app. It doesn't necessarily mean that this action is going to impact that, but, um, so it would just need to be amended, that's all. That's why. Yeah, thirteen. So if you go to number thirteen on the short environmental assessment form.
This is a portion of the site of proposed action lands adjoining that one.
Yeah.
Purpose in wetlands or, oh, there is.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and then, um, a couple of questions now. You'll find a question about endangered and threatened species in the vicinity of, of the project location, which is the parcel essentially. And it should be, um, yes, and it should, or. I think it's just the thirteen A. What is the name of the wetland? Um, it doesn't actually have a name. Um.
For a parcel number or ID, just so I can look it up.
Right, one hundred and seven point three dash one dash. I'm not looking at one. It's actually, it's based on your tax ID number, so you need that.
I have it, I can look it up. I was just wondering if there was a name I didn't look somewhere.
What I would propose is, are you available?
Yeah. And into, uh, yes, eleven and two.
Okay, so come in my office, I'll fill out the EAF.
Oh, thank you so much.
And then since you also need.
I have the check I brought.
Okay, so, yeah, thirteen A should be yes. And fifteen should be Northern Longyear Bat and Bob Turtle. Jay, you take this, um, file that I sent. It should be editable, so you can walk through it with, with you, with her, and then it should be on. Okay. Um, yeah. And this was just provided off of the DCs. Yeah, yeah, so. You said you thought that's on derived it.
I sent you an email.
Yeah, so that's how I, how I'm Mr. Yeah.
Subject to housekeeping, which is going to get taken here tomorrow, can make a motion?
I make motion to conditionally approve the NGO short-term rental over the condition of, of the EAF.
Second?
And, well, anyway, we don't got it.
I'm taking a motion.
So who was the second?
I think I'm.
All in favor? All right, all right, you're, the new one was granted, take care of the paperwork.
Jay, do you want the check now or should I just give it to you?
Take the check now.
Later.
Okay.
You know, yeah.
The next application is an informal review. If you were asked to do to give the potential applicant some feelings on what we're thinking on this. It's the Bronx House Menu Camp. This is considered a sketch plan conference for commercial bike plan will be on 159 Empire Road in town. Is there anybody representing?
Yeah, hi, I'm Adam White, so I'm the director of Bronx House now, Buxton Hills. Um, and then we have the architect from Brent Center Cattle, Carol, who is on Zoom. I appreciate being here with all of you. I came here about seven years ago to do a treehouse for camp. Hundreds of kids have been able to enjoy sort of being out in nature and being out in the lake and sleeping. And we're sort of with this proposal, trying to bring all of our kids out by the lake and let them all enjoy the sunset, whether we're doing Shabbat on Friday night or Abdallah on Saturday, Saturday evening, or doing singing or plays or things of that, sure.
Can you start by giving us a little bit of information about the camp size, the?
Sure.
Is it A?
Yeah, we've been around, we've been in Kopeck and Ankrum since nineteen, we've been around since thirty-one. We've been in Kopeck and Ankrum since nineteen thirty-eight. We're a values-based Jewish camp that's welcoming everybody. We're about three hundred children from seven to sixteen. We run a traditional camp on one side of the lake that's sort of, you know, sports and arts and music and drama and outdoor adventure. Um, and then on the other side of the lake, where we used to run a senior citizens camp, we now run a culinary camp for children as well. It's a sleepover. It is a sleepover camp. Um, and we've got a great diverse population. We give about a quarter of a million dollars a year out in scholarships. So we have law firm partners in the city with kids from the Bronx and other places who couldn't afford a time to go to camps. So. Very nice environment.
Do I have to interact with other person on the screen?
You have Laura and Rick. So I think Rick probably, Laura, you are Rick, is Rick leading or both of you or, I don't know.
Um, who wants to tell us about Rick, what your cast?
So I, when I knew that I wanted to do this project, I'd seen an advert out at a camp in Michigan. Got some really good reviews from the folks at Brent Center Cattle and they can sort of, I wanted to make sure that we had someone who would be able to do this well when we were responsibly and where can tell you about the project.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, you have the drawings. I, um, I, you have a, uh, overall plan and some elevations and details of the structure, the stage structure, I believe. And if I'm missing something, Laura, I'll jump in. But so the idea is to utilize the existing slope hillside, uh, adjacent to the lake, uh, beyond the setback limit, I believe is a hundred fifty feet. So we're uphill from there and it's a fixed seating, a bench seating, uh, uh, facility and with, with a roof on it, uh, covering the seating area and then a separate, uh, uh, post and beam, more or less, uh, deck structure that provides a stage area and then some small area for storage and closed storage for, um, oh, props and costumes and, and also some, a little bit of technology so that we can run, uh, speakers on the stage, uh, facing the audience and control a little bit of lighting on the stage itself. Wanted to kind of feel like a, a theater, but it's, it's not a full-fledged like college campus theater. It's, it's appropriate for camp use and, and that level of sophistication. So, uh, there are, um, let's see. We've located it in an area that has, uh, basically minimal hardwoods. There's a few hardwoods in there, but very minimal and smaller caliper trees in general. Uh, it's located, the, the, the actual location was determined by, uh, relationship of that particular site to the other portions of the camp, uh, housing and other program activity areas. Uh, so it's, um, it, it's hard to say what's central, but it's, it's, it's central between, uh, different age groups of, of, uh, campers that, uh, live on the site. Uh, and as, as Adam mentioned, it's, it's a way to kind of, oh, um, give a different perspective of the overall site and the lake. Uh, when we get to the higher ground surrounding the lake, it's, you don't see anything because of the tree cover. This particular area offers, uh, some kind of, um, well, let's see. Selective views in a sense, because we do have trees and we, we intend to not remove anything beyond the, the footprint area and a little bit of, uh, safety space beyond, uh, uh, so that it, it does maintain that field. From, from the other side of the lake, you barely know this was there, uh, because of the tree cover between the facility and the lake itself. Uh, the access primarily are, is, are, is an existing footpath that runs along the perimeter of the lake. And then some extension spurs from the main driveway that is uphill, uh, toward the, I want to say the east side of, of the hillside, uh, which then connects to the dining facility, health facility, and some of the camper, uh, village areas. Uh, the only utilities we believe, uh, we're, we're, well, that we're planning to have is a little bit of power and, and communications technology. Uh, that's, that's pretty much it. It's, there are no conditioned spaces. It's all open air.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
What's the occupancy?
Oh. Uh, what, what, where did we end up, Laura?
Um, uh, just around five hundred people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is the capacity of the, the camp, uh, including counselors and staff. That would be on site already. So it's not in, it wouldn't add people to the site. It's the existing population.
What is, what kind of performance is of anyone, you know, in times?
Who, Adam, I'll turn that to you.
We would do, um, we do an only every Friday night at seven PM. Look in the site, we're in a bowl, so no one, no one will hear us. I've never had anyone in the ten years I've been at camp say that they've heard anything that happened at camp and anybody should perform. And that would be, our opening would probably be more like seven, eight thirty or Abdallah would be more like also like seven, eight thirty. Our kind of night at camp count shows sometimes for way too long and the kids are sleeping and kind of, but that's probably like ten o'clock. But again, we don't really have any, six hundred forty acres and this is sort of pretty, pretty in the, in the nets that is, it would be hard for us to disturb neighbors at the time.
Yeah, there, there might be a movie night once in a while, uh, so we do have a projection screen. Uh, there may be, um, other kind of more or less, uh, quiet services or, or, uh, speakers, those kinds of things happening, that, you know, it's, it's pretty flexible. It's a new facility for this camp, so they're going to be exploring how to best utilize it to, to, to provide, um, programs and activities that are valued to the, to the camp.
What's the material of the seating there?
Okay, so the seating area, the seats themselves, we are planning on a Trex-type composite, uh, on, on wood posts, uh, on, on this kind of a tiered seating that is created by, uh, wood, um, timbers. We're, we're not planning to pour concrete, uh, create a concrete seating area. And then the structure above is a steel frame with, um, tongue and groove wood decking for the roof. Roof, uh, construction with a membrane roof on top. It's a fairly shallow pitch. And then the deck is, as I mentioned, uh, the, the stage is a heavy timber post and beam and then a, uh, very typical, uh, wood, uh, treated wood deck. And then we'll, we are putting in a smooth finish, uh, uh, not a plywood, but a MDO board finish on top. finish on top of it to not have all the, the, the joints between the wood that might interfere with somebody dancing or moving around. So it's a smoother for finish.
You're gonna do all this tearing with gravel types?
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, well, timbers, eight by eights stacked and then gravel in fill between the, the steps.
What about lighting?
And there's minimal to none in the seating area. There's, there are some low-level bollard-type fixtures that will provide a little bit of lighting so you know where to access into the pavilion. And then going along the side as you walk down toward the stage. The stage will have some, as I mentioned before, some stage lighting, adjustable spotlights and things like that. And then there's some general purpose lighting on the stage for cleanup and things like that.
What about amplification?
It's planned to have well, we haven't actually designed or specified the exact wattages or all that, but a simple system where there might be, there will be speakers mounted on the posts directing toward the audience side. A couple of in, in the main pavilion and then a couple on the stage. That, that's our hope. We don't, we really don't want to create a, a rock venue. We're not looking for anything like that, so.
What, what's your calculation on the area during that?
I missed the last part of that.
What did you calculate that to be? The area for the complexity?
Oh, the project area? Laura, do you have that?
Thank you. You are required.
Oh.
If, if you go over an acre disturbance, you have to make application to the D M C.
We're not anticipating over an acre. There's, there's some question about fire access that might push us there, but I suspect it wouldn't even push us there. It's, it's a pretty, what are the dimensions of the pavilion?
calculation.
You know.
I, I'm not familiar with the extent of the camp. I don't know. I guess you're anticipating that everybody's gonna walk here.
Yes, everyone's.
Yeah, yeah, there, there could be a golf cart that would come to the area close. If, if somebody needs that kind of assistance, that's certainly possible. But no driving, no vehicles, no.
You have a whole lake there?
We do, yeah.
Well, buildings are in the back and stuff there.
Yeah, it's all, all there on the lake, up the hill, basically on all lakes where it's high, yeah, fine. In, in that direction.
I've never been there and lived, I've lived here my whole life and that's probably the one part of Ankrum I've never been in.
You still come in and they're like, there's a little sign out front, pretty people actually really like and we, people come in and oh, my God, it's like huge. It's the main camp part of Kopek, right? And big, it's half Kopek and we have, probably we're close to the edge of where it would be, but like, once you get back down into the gym area in Kopek and then what we now call the red side, it used to be the steam side, it's all Kopek.
In your changing areas, you're showing what looks like showers, but you're saying you're not.
Oh, no, it's, it's just a, it's just a a couple of walls and a curtain to offer privacy if somebody's switching costumes or something like that.
Maybe the X would indicate. I'm not enthralled with the temporary portable toilets for a facility this size. We may have to get a ruling from maybe the health department. I mean, five hundred people temporary toilets seems to be maybe a little overwhelming.
Well, we would, we would have the, anyone who really, really need to go, like everyone is right by where they live and right by the dining room.
Yeah, it's, it's not a matter of whether they really have to go. It's a matter of what the code says you need to you know, install as a ratio of people to per water closet and things like that. I think you're remote from anything else, so. I think that's something we're gonna have to get a ruling or have somebody give us some more information on. And I, I, you do, you're gonna have to deal with firefighting to some extent, I think. I don't know what extent. I don't know if this thing should be sprinkled. I, I, there may have to be some further investigation into that. You got some wood frame, you got some steel.
They take a look at the bathroom situation, they, can they look at the whole camp or they have to just look at?
I think they got to look at this facility that is by.
Even on the camp itself.
It may be a high ratio of maybe fifty people to water closet. But
We'd rather not.
Well, I, I understand you'd rather.
I'm an environmental body, we'd also rather not and kids are pretty used to going down to their bunks, going to the dining room, going to the staff, their protocols for.
You just have to understand for us, it's not subjective. It's what the code says you have to require you to do. I mean, it, it's an unusual situation. May have to ask the county health department to give us some sort of guidance on what they think. If they think they're fine and you comply with the ratio of toilets per minute on and that's fine. But generally, they require electricity. Portable toilets. They need lights and fans and stuff like that, so there'll have to be power, but.
It also looks like the area where you have it proposed, there is significant tree cover there. So I mean, I know you're gonna try and minimize cutting as much as possible, but it's a fairly tree area. If I'm, I'm trying to transfer from here to there, so looking at the aerial photos and it, it does.
Well, what, what, what I said was it is a treat area. We acknowledge that. What we're looking at often when we do these kinds of projects that we're looking for areas and we'll shift things around usually to avoid, you know, great hardwood specimens and such and, and stick to areas that either have not, not very established growth or, or at least in the softwood pines kind of thing. You know, I'm not sure what percentage of the site other than the lake is open compared to wooded, but over several hundred acres, it's, you know, the majority of the site is wooded. But point, point taken, understood.
We have a lot of questions. I would like to see something of an overview of the entire camp. Somehow, whether it's an aerial or something that we could actually read to see what the distances are.
And what is, what is the distance from that? I know you're over a hundred fifty feet, but what is the distance?
Oh. Well, we, we, we're pretty close to that number, but we're not right on it. We're a few feet away and, and that's certainly negotiable in the sense that it's a fairly consistent slope on the site. So if we needed to shift to provide, provide a little more buffer, we, we can certainly do that.
D C came out to check to make sure that we weren't. There is this picture here, does the white dot?
Yeah.
Campus and round back.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but.
It doesn't give you distances, but it just gives you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get a map together that shows distances and, and tree cover, those kinds of things. Also, going back, not to belabor it, but going back to the restroom issue, there are a building code. Now, we'd have to verify with the local health department, but there are building code provisions for distances if they're not in the facility of so many hundred feet. So we'll double-check that information as well to see if we would at least comply with that part, understanding that the health department may have their own requirements.
I'm few for this proposal and asking to evaluate it as well.
This existing drive, is this private road? This public street, what is existing?
It's all, it's all internal to the site. It's all, they're, they're basically driveways. Some are paved, some are gravel. That's how most camps are.
For the most part, you're gonna walk down this drive to get here.
Correct. Correct. The only vehicles in camp there, when kids are there, would be the, the camp maintenance folks. And, you know, they know where they're at and they know, understand how they have to drive. Public does not drive around camp when kids are in there.
Yeah, if they're coming from the dining hall, we should too with a value.
Probably, I mean, is it helpful for me to? I think it's in the
It's obviously.
I don't know if you remember, but you, you did a wedding.
Oh.
Two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
These are dining halls somewhere right here.
You're on the red side. Thanks. So here's the gym. There's a dining room. The dining room is right here. Sort of adjacent to.
Oh.
There are two dining rooms, so the dining room in Kopek and then there's.
Why would it be referred to Kopek?
Because it's on the border of Kopek and we're in both towns, so it has to be referred to them, at least for their opinion.
Even if we're putting the building in Ankrum, interesting, it's a treehouse. We didn't do that.
Especially something like this, which I believe.
It's gonna need a public, it's gonna be a public hearing.
It's gonna be, yeah.
They're gonna be noticed anyway.
They asked it's.
Anything else you can think of?
How, what are the when is camp open? What is, what's the timeframe?
For the bill to work for?
For the whole.
Season, season camp's open on June twenty-fifth and, and the end of August.
I'm sorry, it's when?
June twenty-fifth till the end of August.
Oh.
The facility isn't used off? Isn't at all?
We, the Kopek part of the facility in, pretty close. We use the Kopek part of the facility in May and then somewhat in September.
Yeah, Tom, just let the cat out of the bag. Do weddings, where do you do these weddings?
The climbing side. I think I might have been the first one, I don't know.
Yeah, because that's actually a special apartment in Ankrum.
Well, that was in Kopek.
Yeah.
It's a hence the reason why these things get referred, so each town knows what the other town is doing. Yeah. Being a good neighbor.
The camp for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sick of it. Plus years old, always been.
My kid went there, it's been there since thirty.
So.
So Nan is gonna take over these two bodies.
Well, if they make a formal application, we'll, we'll, we'll set up an S B R we'll send it to our consultants for their review and comment. I mean, this is us, it's a major application and a lot of moving parts here and wanna get it right.
Always want to get it right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just clarify the process that if you do wish to apply that application with a referral could be that. If it was not filled out yet, that would go to Ed. Then he would make the referral. He will plan and order which I will receive. I will collect the application. He would want basically take recommendations. Addition. Right, one to show. And it. Right, one, action is the law.
So we're, we start, do we, we're starting with you, we're letting our health department know, we're also letting Kopek know. It's the process to let Kopek come from something like this.
It would, it would come from them.
It would come from, so we don't have to do that part.
You don't have to do anything at this point. You want to reach out to the health department to get their opinion.
Yeah, we, when we're doing a project like this, we have to.
Yes.
And we definitely, we're already about to know that this is sort of hopefully as an A game.
And for our process, if we would go to Ed to get the building permit, have you already started doing that with Ed yet or is this all?
We came to you for the sketch plan before we went to him.
Okay, perfect. So yeah.
We didn't want to create something that.
Yeah. So what you'll, what you actually do is you go to Ed and actually file the building permit essentially, and that's when it all stops. I think that's what you were trying to say, Jay, right?
Um, so.
Yeah.
Does zoning enforcement want to see building permit application? Wants to see.
You said you had the, um, D C out to flag the wetlands?
D C came to make sure that the wetlands weren't that close, and I believe they are not that close. And I believe they flagged them, so I believe they're actually down in the corner, down where the treehouse, but and so they're not close at all, but they came to make sure. I guess they got called by him to make sure, to come in, to make sure that we weren't close enough, that we weren't close enough, then there wasn't anything. It was what we, it was our understanding of it, that Jay's looking confused, so maybe not.
Um, so I, I did have the Evan Hogan's number. Um, so that should have been, uh, ready. So we can verify that.
Yeah, there'll be little slams with colored tops on.
I'm out of the woods since you came, so I don't know, I don't think.
Anything else?
In terms of issues like before we're finding plans, is there a way to figure out bathroom and all those things before we draw something up without to then come back and and find that?
Well, the, the plumbing code will have the ratio for water closets to occupants, which there are.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can get that from the plumbing code. We'll verify any provisions that may be in the building code for distances and, but in, I think concurrently, it sounds like we should at least check in with the health department and get their read on that.
Know from them that if they think this type of facility, camper and climate facility is acceptable for a seasonal use, that they're okay with it.
Right, right. And, and I, I know it doesn't mean much to you at this point, but yeah, we, we've been involved with projects where things like that have happened. Actually, it's more than just the porta potty. They, they put on wash stands with running, you know, with actual water and, and soap or, or sanitizers. So most camps are pretty well-equipped to deal with those kinds of situations when, when need be, so. But like I said, we'll follow through with the health department and make sure we don't keep going down a road we shouldn't be.
I mean, would you buy these portable toilets or you'd rent them?
We rent them.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that, but.
Okay, the other questions from?
And then, well, so fire, we will, we, we were beginning the process. We're gonna reach out directly to the, 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 the fire authorities to confirm that. That's, that's not through you all. That's, we, we do that directly with them.
Um, our fire marshal doesn't like to render any opinion. We do it through the building department. I think we should review the fire code, you know, the access drive aisle requirement.
That's right. Okay.
The distance that this is, this term launch, more than five hundred feet. I don't, it doesn't seem like that's more than a couple hundred feet, but you gotta be able to turn the fire truck around at the bottom. Um, you know, some of that stuff you could check. Our consultants will fully review it if you make a formal application.
I think that's so good, David.
Okay.
He may give you, you know, an informal opinion, you know.
All right.
Question, here you've got different trees labeled. Does that mean you're cutting the other trees?
I'm sorry?
There are different trees level labeled, cherry and oak and elm, et cetera. Does that mean that you're cutting the other trees and leaving them or why? What is that about?
We, we asked, we asked the surveyor. We, we asked, we asked the surveyor to give us the species and uh, of all the trees that are over, I think, um, what was it, maybe eight inch caliper or something like that? Um, just so we know where, uh, where, whatever trees are located, so. Um, so that's the information that's there, obviously, within the footprint of what we're developing, all the trees would have to be removed.
The, sorry. The larger, um, like the bolded trees with the larger text, those are just the hardwoods in the area, um, just noted differently.
You don't plan to clear jumpers, so.
No, no, not, again, not beyond what we would require safety wise, you know, we don't want a tree that, even if we can build around it, we don't want a tree leaning on the building or anything like that, or, or if there's a uh, diseased tree or damaged tree, obviously, you know, we, as part of the program, we take that down anywhere nearby, so that, you know, if it, it decides to fall, it doesn't, you know, damage the structure, so.
So within the seating area, we have something like twenty P or twenty four P, those of those tree marks or where this are?
Those are pines.
What's that?
Most of them, most of them are pines, you know, the majority of trees in the area are pines. Or a softwoods, or I guess whatever pine they flagged, yeah. So.
Much as possible, it always is to be an amphitheater and no one's fully looking like with this onset and sort of connecting bits to nature and that one, that's, that's the goal.
So the trees between the amphitheater and the stage and the water are gonna be cleared?
No, 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 no. No, the trees be, you know, basically anything uh, toward the water, basically from that hundred fifty, fifty foot line out, other than what's needed for construction, so we may need about ten feet or so, but um, all that remains. Again, um, I'm not sure if I'm not being clear, but only the, the footprint area of the development is what we are planning to clear.
Your dimension lines kind of indicate a bigger area behind the stage, it looks like that's a cleared area.
No, the dimensions for the stage might be out there, but it's not indicating that's what we're clearing, no. Well, we'll make sure that's clear when we, we, we provide the final drawings.
Yeah, it just indicates, it looks like that's shooting part of the stage, I know it's not.
Yeah, yeah, okay, no, uh, we'll take a look at that, make sure it's, it's not confusing.
Anything else? Um, I hope we've helped you along. Um, I hope you, with what we've discussed, you can make your decision on whether you wanna go forward. Um, it's gonna be a little bit of a process, it's not gonna happen at one meeting, I can tell you that, so. Um, I wanna promise you a rose garden, but.
Well, how many meetings would you imagine something like this would be?
It depends how fast you get us information, if you're on you, you, you've got like two weeks to get on to the next meeting, but I don't know how much more you can accomplish in two weeks. Um, but that would get you on to the main meeting. Um, we, we're certainly gonna have another meeting, informal, before we would set a public hearing. We need a site visit in there. And um, it, it could be, you know, three meetings or something like that. Maybe, maybe four. You know. We don't know what our obstacles are until we get some of these answers from the health department, I mean, you may be designing a septic system, you may not. Um, and if that comes to be, you may decide it's not worth it, so I mean, we've got, we gotta go through the motions, we have consultants planning and engineering that, that will be reviewing the more detailed plans, um. We don't know if there's any obstacles as far as zoning at this point for something like this, or, or planning consultant. Um, would let us know that. I don't see any, but, you know, there's, the code is complicated, it's a very detailed zoning code, so. I mean, that being said, you know, um, I guess we hope to see you back.
Yeah. Be back.
So. All right, um. Okay, anything else, Jay, you gotta talk about the minutes? In the events. Thank you all very much. Anybody, the minutes came out late, but did anybody get a chance, did everybody get a chance to review them, any time, any thoughts? I'll hold them till next month.
I think, yeah, this is really minor, but on the levado, um. This, I remember the public asking about the definition of the short term mental, and then a little bit later, it's.
Yeah.
It's kind of the same.
To different people, apparently they, uh, have an age.
Oh, okay, yeah, it just, that was really bad, but.
I, I can clarify that.
Yeah, it's.
He goes. In, in transcribing. It's hard for me to add everybody's, especially when.
Yeah, yeah.
This is not.
So you wanna move forward with the minutes or?
I didn't see anything else.
The only thing I see here, it says the sunburned a little west, but I didn't contact Thompson pitch. That story, Thompson pitches. It's a form text of the short term. Wait, did I, did I get the name wrong?
No, no.
Maybe somebody else said about. Then it was.
My.
Yeah, I might have asked it on, so, yeah, yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
I'll take the minutes. You can change it.
We good?
Yeah.
Uh, like to take a motion for the March second minutes? With corrections, with corrections, second.
Second.
One favor, right, all right. Okay, we have this, pick a time for this discussion, is that for the whole board or just?
Um, so, but I would recommend, if I don't have John or him like their, their schedule, and they may also ask that Nan be involved in the meeting. So I would like to just receive feedback on the best potential things.
Okay.
This has to be noticed for the public.
No, um, I got a petition from him that because it's in, I am eating, it's not subject to Seattle open meetings or, oh, and, and now, sorry, not open meetings, so. Doesn't have to be noticed.
So. Are we doing it, are we doing it via Zoom, so everybody doesn't have to come out or?
Um. I'll, I'll reach out to them and see if they're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I don't wanna drag everybody here for a fifteen minute discussion, you know, if it's gonna get lengthy, we could just call in and do it via Zoom, if anybody have a problem doing that? I think there'd be more flexibility.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, that's it, Dave. A day. All right, let's see what we got for dates.
I'm gonna any time up until May.
All right.
We're talking evening, right?
Yeah.
I know, so, yeah, this evening.
I mean, sometimes it's five, six o'clock.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, there's lions, you know. Don't wanna pay him so much for working on it.
Toothpaste or not.
I'm saying. You know, I'm gonna pick something I have a concept on after I say.
Wait, just do this for a minute. Please, do the.
Um.
Exactly.
Where people can all see what everyone else is doing.
Why don't we do it in person, why don't you find out what Nan and?
Yeah.
Uh, and John and his assistant are available, let them give us some dates and we'll, we'll vote on.
Yeah, we'll do a whole.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we could do it, you know, five, six o'clock, I would think, we don't have to. As long as there's no requirement, we have to do it in person, that is, trying to find privilege, I don't see why we can't do it, because it doesn't have to be noticed.
Is it very complicated?
I haven't seen them that long yet, so. Um, I don't know, no, it's. We do this for the.
Well, based on what I read in the letter, and I may be wrong, it's been determined that the only application is now existing non-conform in most codes, and this is my opinion. If you abandon an existing non-conforming use, it becomes moribund. You're shit out of line.
So I think that's why they continuously renew.
Right, but you have to physically do something, like if you're running a restaurant, you have a special use permit.
I wouldn't, I would. Yeah, but.
Also, all of it would be.
Well, yeah, I wanna talk to both Donald.
Yeah.
What they think about that. Yeah, cause you could, yeah. They could.
So there's some issues that they want to explain to us, but it's probably what I initially thought when the application first. We'll find out. So if that's everything, any other motion to a joint? Meeting is over. One hour. And two minutes.
Well.
So in two thousand nineteen, before the pandemic.